Hi, we're calling the real boys to read your school commitee to order. Please stand up for allegiance. Okay, thanks, everybody. We're here tonight for scheduled interviews for our interim superintendent position. Trace Nowick is going to help us organize them and bring them in. We each have a packet with the questions, so we'll stick to those questions. I believe they're assigned, so we'll each read one or two. Megan is not with us tonight. She has a personal issue, so she's not with us tonight. So any questions that are assigned to Megan, I'll just read myself.
Mr. Sherry, your first candidate. Good evening.
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Good.
It's Don Flair again.
Donna Flaherty, yes, who was debating whether I should come around and shake all of your hands. But in light of the fact that the thing was going through our building, I think you would probably prefer that I did not do that.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we all, as you probably know, we've wrote down some questions to ask you. We have a list of them. You're just gonna go around and read them and feel free to answer how you wish.
Sure, it sounds great.
All right, I'll start with why are you interested in this position and this district?
Sure, that's a great question. For me, I really love, I got to know the community through my work at EXCEPT. I was just telling the story that we do a lot of external professional development. We travel around for groups of teachers and sped directors and what have you. So we've been holding our news sped directors institute over at the Haven. So I had the opportunity to drive around the community and see what it looked like. And it just looked like such a wonderful place, reminded me of the town that I raised my children in, which was a nice small town. We were also part of a regional school district as well. During my time there, I served six years as a school committee member and five years on the finance committee member. So I understand sort of the playing push and pull of being in a regional school district. But what I really like about it is the opportunity in a small, you know, town, you have the opportunity to really immerse yourself into the community and really get into the schools, get to know the students, get to know the teachers, get to know the principals. You have a total of three schools, makes it, you know, just delightfully manageable. I think that's about 1,100 students that you have as well, which really makes it easy to get to know students on a one-on-one basis and be able to go in at lunchtime and see the students and, you know, have those conversations to see how their days are going. So a lot of that appeals to me as well as I really do like the structure of, you know, having a selectmen, having the finance committee that speaks to me as to how you can work together and collaborate. You know, I know also that you have a fire building that you need as well as needing a senior center and some other issues on your budgets during what we call the fiscal cliff in education these days. It's something you're well aware of. So really, you know, the play of all of that and knowing what the community's needs are and understanding the community and the culture and being able to be a part of all of that, it's exciting to me.
All right, thank you. Lisa, would you like to ask the next question, please?
Sure. How do you build strong relationships with parents, teachers, your admin team, town select board, finance committee, capital committee, and the school committee?
Just the handful of people. So I would obviously start with an entry plan. I would define what the questions would be that I would want to ask people so that I could quickly get up to speed on what the town initiatives are, the schools initiatives. And then I would schedule certainly one-on-ones with each of you so I could ask you, what are your dreams, hopes, what do you see for the future of the school, the weaknesses that you would want to work on, as well as what you're proud of most about both school and your towns of Berlin and Boylsted. I would do the same in meeting with my admin team, central office team and the principals. I would want to meet with each of them, one-on-one, really kind of get away from knowing them, see what their needs are. I've noticed in your, the strategic plan that you're ending now that you really have a lot of initiatives in a short period of time. So I wonder the impact of that on the principals and on the teachers. All good things, because we want our students to have positive outcomes, right? We're all here for the sake of our students and their future, and they can't do it without us. But, you know, what does that mean for our staff and how can we help them to continue to be more successful? I would also meet with teacher groups as well. I would want to meet with the union president and understand what they're doing. Have ongoing meetings with everybody. Certainly, I would apply that same to the select board, finance committee, capital committee. Again, you've got a lot going on in both towns and how do we balance all that? So the only way to do that is really having that rapport and getting to know people and understand what is the culture of the town and what is the culture of the town politics in Berlin, which could be very different than in Boylsted, and what their needs are and how does that apply to the culture that we have here in the school district as well? You know, and even with your separate elementary schools, although we're still one school district, you still have a very unique cultures and identities within those elementary schools as well. So really teasing all of that out and being able to immerse myself in that and understand, you know, who the people are and what their needs are in that sense. Once I gather all that information, that would be a wonderful opportunity to sort of form a committee and set the direction, look at where you are in your strategic plan now, where we're going to go. Have a full committee, including parents, community members, school committee members, administrators, teachers and students as well, because we want to engage our older students in all of that and see what do they think they're living every single day in our school district. So what do they think about that? What are the changes that they would like to see in our strategic plan? Further, what I would do, what I do presently is I do one-on-ones once a week with my central office staff. And then I do twice a month, I meet with my entire leadership team. We do a variety of things from mentoring, professional development, as well as really digging in deep with regards to what we need to do for our students, for our schools, for our teachers as well. We all know that there's more and more difficulty in finding teachers that have the license that we need to put in front of our students. So some of what we do is go out and make relationships with Bridgewater State College, Massapei Community College, so that we're taking up our professionals and our teachers and we're collaborating with the university and colleges in order to make programs for them to attend so that we can help them and guide them along the way into getting their licenses. So really, we talk a lot about that during those two meetings a month and they're usually a full morning each month, twice a month. And some of it is their professional development. So for example, a lot of my administrators really needed to understand budgeting. You know, we work at Collaborative. We don't have a budget that we receive on July 1, like a school district does, but we have a profit and expense budget, which means it's like running a small business. So we really need to go out and make our money. We have no entitlement grants, so we're very active in getting competitive grants. But basically, they needed to understand that and they needed to understand their budgets. So really looking at what your needs are and fulfilling those needs as well.
Next question was for Megan, but Megan's not here tonight. So what are your greatest strengths and weaknesses as a leader?
Okay, we all have them, we all know that. So I think one of my greatest strengths, if I had thought about it, would be my tenacity. I really, when I see a problem or I see something that I think needs to be done, for example, you know, we needed licensed teachers, what are we doing, right? How can we help with that situation? It's really getting out there, problem solving, collaborating and setting up a plan and action that we can work together to get to the end of that. I would also say that I'm a servant leader, so I really look at students' needs, parents' needs, staff needs, community needs, how can I help? What skills do I have that I can apply to bring resolution and solve some of the problems or issues or celebrate all of the good things that we're doing? Because we certainly do a lot of good things that we don't want to lose. We want to make sure people know that and how we're advertising that as well to our community so they do understand where their tax dollars are going. So I love that work and I love doing that. I love mentoring people. I've mentored a new number of teachers to become administrators, whether it be principal or special education director and superintendent. So that's something that I find beneficial with regards to, like I said, leadership. As far as my weaknesses go, I think one of my weaknesses can be, because I am very oriented on getting the job done and what are we doing and how are we achieving it, that I really have high standards for myself and I really like deadlines and I like people to hit their mark. And, you know, when we have a strategic plan and we're looking at what our initiatives are for the year, I have my team create a map for the year. This is probably my engineering background coming in, but we do a map and we work backwards. Like where do we need to be at all the different places in order to hit our mark at the end? So one thing that can sometimes frustrate me that I have to think about, how can we work on, is if somebody's, you know, not meeting their deadlines and they're falling behind and really sitting down and having those conversations with them. What do you need? How can we help you? What do we need to take off your plane? So really looking at it that way, but I'm very deadline oriented and project oriented and I want to get things done for kids and for the community.
Catherine, do you mind asking the next question?
How will you handle the balance of respecting longtime employees of the district's experience and familiarity with how things have always been done with new ideas, changes and perspectives?
And that's not an unfounded concern. So I think when I look at that and I think about it, I think a lot of times what happens is if you're a longtime employee, it doesn't matter where you are, right? It could be at the Berlin-Boylsted Regional School District or it, you know, could be working at AAM or wherever. You want to feel that you're valued. You want to feel that the work that you've done has meaning and means something to people. You want to feel that in the case of, you know, we're working with children and that's what matters. It's not we just, it's not producing, you know, computers or something like that. We're working with children. And you want to know that the work you've done over the many years that you've been here is respected, has positive outcomes, and you want people to reflect on that and let you know that. And I think sometimes what I've seen in my experience is that when people hear, you know, about a new initiative or, you know, if things are changing, that their work is no longer valued, that they're no longer valued and we take it rather personally. And that's, we understand that, right? That's understandable. So the question is, how do you, how do you deal with that? What's the go-around to make people appreciate, you know, that we know the work that you've done and how important it is? And I think it's really getting in there, getting on the ground floor and understanding what their culture is. You know, why is this important to them? What part do they play in that? What do they think about the potential new initiatives? What can we do to make them feel comfortable? What does a rollout look like for a new initiative? Have we planned it properly? Have we considered a timeline for it? Does it make sense for our staff? What are the steps we need to do in between the, here's a great idea, Desi's asking us to do this, so let's get over here and do it. What happens in between and how long is that going to take? And I think in order to make it respectful, in order to have it rolled out properly, we really need to involve all the constituents in it and have task forces. So that would be including our teachers and that, some of our administrators, inviting parents and students and that, to really have those conversations, piloting some things so that they have a voice, they want to know that their voice matters and that they can have a voice in what's happening. I mean, after all, if we don't have happy productive teachers in our classroom, we're going to see that with our children, right? So we need to value our teachers, we need to value our paraprofessionals and our related support staff. And by, we do that by applauding and celebrating all of their achievements and then bringing them into the new initiatives that we are looking at. I think I would also say, so we've had a couple of new initiatives that we've done at the EXCEPT Collaborative. So we've seen a change since the pandemic. Our biggest initiative that we have are programs for students with disabilities. And we've had a shift, a huge shift in the six years that I've been there. From, most of our students initially were students who had multiple disabilities, who had intellectual impairments, who had autism. And since the pandemic, our shift is 80% of our students are students who are marching towards a general education diploma, who's going to go on to either, you know, service or college or the workforce. And they deserve a right to the same general curriculum that everybody else has. Well, when I got there, we didn't have that because we didn't have those students. But now we have these students with significant trauma, with significant behavioral, emotional challenges, but who are very bright students, who deserve the same as every other student in the Commonwealth. So what we did is we rolled out two huge initiatives. One was reading and literacy, because all students deserve to read and they have lost a lot of instruction between both the pandemic and the fact because of some of their behaviors that were out of class and they missed instruction. So we wanted to make sure they felt safe, secure and they could access that instruction. And the other piece was the SEL initiatives, because again, this is what our students need right now. And it's a mandate, by the way, so we have to do that through Desi. But, so it was good stuff. So we went out, we achieved some competitive grants for both of those areas. So we received almost $2 million in competitive grants in order to fund all of that. Though we really took a step back and thought about our teachers and said, what do we need to do to make you feel comfortable? Because the first thing you hear is, well, we've never done that before. We've never had to teach the general curriculum. You're right, but you didn't have these students or, you know, we didn't have these issues before. So really working with them and having a lot of training sessions in regards to, they were shifting with the students that they were working with. So we really needed to bring professional development and to talk about, what does a student who has trauma look like and how do we respond? And it's very different than a student who has autism or, you know, multiple disability. Same thing with looking at social emotional aspects, because kids respond in very different ways. And a student who's high functioning autism responds very differently than, you know, a student who's all inward. So we really had to start from the ground floor and start working with professional development with them from there and then build up and then start having them piloting the different curriculums, both for the SEL and for the reading and literacy initiatives. We brought a coach in for the readings to help them with teaching reading. We did data teams, worked on teaching them how to do data. They were great at behavioral data. We really had to focus on the academic data then, because it was a whole different group of students. So really taking a look at what they had done and really trying to bring along those people who had been at the Collaborative 20 and 25 years, that, you know, were some of the people that were pushing back the most, but really saying, we value the work that you're doing. And we still had room for people who did need to instruct students who had autism or multiple disabilities and, you know, maybe this is the place for you. And so really letting people have that option and opportunity to sort of move around to where it made sense for them, but that they were still a valued member of our community. But, you know, and again, I think sometimes it's just, what am I losing? You know, and do people respect me? And really looking at that and making sure that we understand that, you know, our teachers and our staff are people too and that, you know, we really need to value them and value the work that they've done and show them that we care. What you do is important to me, we respect that.
Thank you, Jess, would you mind asking the next question?
We have flu in this district as well, so I apologize. So how could you create an environment where staff felt safe to approach you with problems?
So as I said, my leadership style is that of a servant leader. I always have an open door policy. I've always, whether I, when I was an assistant principal, sped director, I've always had an open door policy. I try and find ways of integrating myself in the classroom. I will go out and help, you know, on a rough day, I'll go out and I'll assert myself, I'll teach a lesson and really show them that what they do, I'll do, because it's, you know, for the sake of the students. We want the students to progress and we want students to feel safe and want to come there. So it's really showing them that we're all in this together and then they feel comfortable with me. When the pandemic hit, one thing I found that was very beneficial was every Wednesday, and I continue it today, is every Wednesday from usually about 3 to 4 o'clock, I have an open Zoom meeting. So anybody can join that open Zoom meeting and they can have a conversation with me. They can ask me about certain things. I've had, you know, a couple of my life skills teachers talk to me about getting the refrigerator for their classroom, all the way to just talking about what fun things people have learned to do over vacation or, you know, over the weekend or something and all kinds of things in between. We've talked about some of the initiatives we've rolled out. We've talked about what plans might be as we progress forward, you know, as we're restructuring things. So really, I leave it open for anyone to come in for an hour and we just have a conversation. Some people pop on for five minutes, some people stay the whole time. I have some people who show up pretty regularly and other people who've only shown up once or twice. But it's there for them and it gives them an opportunity to really get to know me as a person as well as themselves. And because our facility is spread out a bit like most collaboratives, it allows people out of Midway to be able to participate as well. And I also do, you know, building visits, program visits. We do walkthroughs where we get to know, you know, the students, see the staff. I greet every Monday, I greet at one building or another, students coming in for the week. So I think it's just really being a person, you know, being vulnerable. When we opened school this year, I shared a story about one of my brothers. Like we talked about the why, I wanted people to think about, you know, why do we do this work, right? Why are we here, working with students? And in Collaborative, sometimes, you know, days can be incredibly difficult. So why do we here? Why do we keep coming back? So I really wanted to share with them my why. So I think being vulnerable in front of your staff and sharing personal information and letting them get to know you as a person is just so beneficial. So I really kind of shared how my why really centered on, I have a big family, this seven of us, seven siblings, and my oldest brother and, you know, he had his struggles in life and really kind of shared about that. He passed away about a year and a half ago. And really wanted to kind of talk about his story and how that really changed the trajectory of what I thought my career would be. You know, I started off in engineering, love numbers, you know, wanted to do that. But then I had a lot of whys and a lot of curiosity in, you know, how are we all from the same family and yet this is happening and that is happening? So I really wanted to understand that. So went back to school and, you know, got my master's in special ed and elementary ed and then wanted to know more and shifted my career, just so I could understand that and how I could apply that to life and really, you know, be a positive person in the lives of a lot of children, a lot of students. So I think being vulnerable is just so important and just being, you know, a typical person, going to football games, going to events, going to spelling bees, you know, all of those pieces where they can come see you cheering on fear the deer, you know, that there you are and wearing your green. So I think it's important. And I do, I have kids who come and see me and they'll ask, you know, their principal, if, you know, if you're having a little trouble and, you know, I want to see Ms. Donna, I want to talk to her about this problem, which is kind of fun, so it's nice. But yeah.
Thank you. Another question from Megan. So how do you handle conflict situations within the school districts?
There's always lots of conflict situations in school districts. And again, I think the important part is we need to form relationships. That's, you know, key and of most of importance is forming positive relationships and rapport with all of the people in the school district. Really getting to know people, understanding their values, understanding the culture. Again, each of your buildings has a different culture. I'm sure your admin team has a different culture. Your principals probably band together and have their own culture. I know that when I was in that position, we did that because, you know, only so many people understand that role thoroughly. So really looking at, you know, what is it that people are striving for and what is it that they want? So I talked a little bit about how I, we've done some schooling with my leadership team with regards to budgeting, right? What does the budget look like? What is your piece of the pie? You know, how do you manage your piece of the pie and how does that impact this? So and the reason for that is because oftentimes, and I'm just using the budgeting as an example, the reason for that is, you know, people look at a $25 million budget and say, I know you have $150 in there to get me, fill in the blank, whatever that is. We don't. Here's why we don't, right? So what does that look like? You know, when you have, and principals are wonderful at protecting their people, you know, and giving them what they need, because again, happy teachers, happy kids, positive outcomes for everybody. Same thing in special education. We know that kids could do better if, you know, fill in the blank. So how do we balance all of that? And I find that often the conflict does center around, you know, what we need for our kids and advocating for our kids and how do we successfully manage that with all of the different people that we know are here for such good reasons, you know, for the outcomes of our students? You know, so how do we work with those people so that they understand and give them an opportunity to sort of look at the big picture as well and have those hard and difficult conversations? So, you know, collaboration is key, positive rapport is key, education is key, what people need to understand and learn and know about. But then ultimately, as well, somebody has to make those hard decisions as well, right? At some point in time, you know, as the superintendent, as the executive director, I make that decision, you know, if it's going to be this or this or how we're going to distribute things. And it really needs to be in the best interest of what we're doing for kids. We really need to go back and take a look at a strategic plan. What did we say that we were going to do this year? How are we achieving those outcomes and those initiatives? Where are we at? Are we measuring it properly? What do we need to bolster this initiative? And do we need to shift funds or do we need to shift people or, you know, what the conflict is? If we go back to your question with regards to new initiatives, how do we keep peace with the teachers? Are we giving them properly what they need in order to do their jobs functionally? So really taking a look at that and considering, you know, what is in the best interest overall with the district? And if I took that another step further and I started thinking about the community as well, we have two communities as well as our district community. You really have to apply very similar logic in strategic planning and building relationships and rapport with your selectmen and your finance committee and your capital committee. You need to visit your seniors, because you need them to also understand, you know, this is our strategic plan, this is why we're doing what we do, this is why we're asking for what we're asking for. You know, here's the results we're hoping for, here's the standards that the state is requiring of us. And here is the portrait of a graduate that we want to see for our students. So really, without that level of understanding, people are just going to kind of fall back. And, you know, we've all heard, you know, schools get the biggest chunk of the budget. Yes, we do. We have the most people. We're serving the entire population of the students within our town. But it impacts the town. You want them to be successful, you want them to come back and to have their jobs and to settle in your towns and just keep that town and community going with happy people. So, you know, it's all tied together. So I think that, yeah. So insofar as dealing with conflicts, I think it really is the building blocks that you start with, right? The rapport, the relationships, the understanding of the community, the understanding of the cultures, which can be very different in different areas. Then how do you apply that and how do you provide knowledge and education to people about what our mission and vision is for our children?
Thank you. Next to me, so could you speak to your skills and experience in the budget process? You just did a little bit, but please address your experience specifically with regional school budgets.
Okay, sure, sure. I have a lot of experience in the budget process in a variety of different settings, which I found to be quite beneficial in regards to, you know, problem solving and really being able to take a look at a budget and think about how we can resolve it. As I had told you, when I was on the school committee in the regional district that I was in, two small towns. was in, two small towns, I also sat on the finance committee and I have to say that's some of the best education I ever had in my life. It really, being on the school committee made me truly understand how schools function. I had no idea. I was a teacher at the time, I had no idea. But it really opened up my eyes to, you know, the balancing, the planning, the difficult decisions that school committee members have to make with regards to policies and procedures and, you know, what your specific roles are within the community as well. And then I took that, so I did that in my first year and then my second year, I was the finance liaison for the school committee, but I was an active full member of the finance committee. And that in itself as well, so I was able to take that knowledge I had developed about the school budget and understanding all the different aspects of it. And I was able to bring that up to another level and truly start understanding all of the different needs and wants of all of the different town departments, you know, the fire tower wants another station. The seniors have been fighting for a center for 10 years. The police are looking to bring in two more police officers because they don't have anybody during certain times of the night. All of those different aspects in the balancing of it all, taking a look at what a bond is, understanding that in when you're building or when you're adding to your HVAC or your roofing and, you know, what are all the different pieces that you need to know in order to formulate a strategic plan for your town, a 10-year plan, really, you're looking at for a town because of the tax base and all of that. So that was terrific. The aspect of that then, sitting at the table as school committee member of a regional school committee, was really balancing. So my town was smaller than I lived in, we didn't have a lot of business, so it was really on the backs of the people living there. You know, they, when the taxes went up, it was really, they were the property taxes. There's no sales tax in New Hampshire, so it's all goes to property taxes. So it's a little bit different structure. Whereas the other town, although small in itself, it had a whole lot of business in it. So they could afford or ask or look for a larger increase of revenue in the vocational center or, you know, whatever it is that they wanted. So it was really working on that balance with my fellow school committee members from the other town as well as the members on that town as to understand the different places we're all in and, you know, bringing in what our towns needed as well to really come to some general consensus with regard to what we're going to ask for for the budget and what that was going to look like for each town. Each town, what were their separate budget? But there was still an implication across the board for both. I know you understand that because you're in the same situation, so. But, so we have that. As far as, you know, when I was in Battle Creek, Michigan, and I was the Director of Student Services, they have Battle Creek, Michigan, it's a city. My department alone had a budget of $50 million, so really balancing that budget, looking at all the different, we had four high schools, we had six middle schools. It was really quite large. We had very high population of students with disabilities, so managing that whole budget gave me a good opportunity to really take a look at a larger overarching budget and how to manage that and prioritize as well. And again, circle back to what is our district plan and what are our priorities and initiatives for this year, while balancing those unexpected displacement or busing situations that you might have. As far as, you know, and that's the same with the other opportunities that I've had when I was a Director of Student Services, I'm the Assistant Superintendent. Working as an assistant principal, I understood how you really are looking for your own building, your own people, and that budget is the most important piece to you. So I feel like I can appreciate that and I can understand that perspective as well. As an executive director, I had mentioned earlier that we don't receive like our budget on July 1st and then we manage our budget. We have to generate a revenue. We have to bring in competitive grants, that's how we have our budget. So we propose a budget and work collaboratively with my central office senior team. We propose a budget starting, we would be starting our budget a couple, few months because we have the budget approved by December of the year, so we have to propose our initiatives by October. So it's really thinking in terms of being the business person and really having to balance that and really having to look at it. And, you know, it's a very similar application to what you have to do with regards to a budget in a school district, particularly in a regional district. You really have to take a look and watch your money and see where you're at each month and ensure that, you know, your percentages aren't going over or you're not exceeding in a particular area and really resetting and re-grounding and bringing ideas and bringing that information to the school committee so that they're fully aware as well and that they can vote and make some decisions with regard to what we think are the best initiatives or directions that we have to do. So I do, I have a lot of experience in budgeting and presenting budgets at town meetings and presenting budgets to finance committees, boards of directors, all of that.
Thank you. Laura, last but not least, would you take the last question?
So, so my question's long, but the good news is the answer's probably short and it gives your voice the rest. But I need to kind of tell a little background. So we're currently in the middle of a big shift. Our current interim superintendent has had to do much more than just his superintendent duties. He's trying to make sense of last year's budget and finding things like job descriptions and professional practices that need updating or creating as to some simply don't exist. Two rural districts that kind of came together. He typically works well beyond 7:00 PM on weekdays, attends town meetings in both Berlin and Boilstein, and often runs until nine or 10:00, and he often spends weekends at central office. Do you feel you are equipped to continue his work? Would you be able to dedicate as much time to turning our district around so we could attract a full-time superintendent next year?
Short answer, yes. No, I think that anybody who's sitting in the superintendent's seat and executive director seat, that is the expectation. Like, you understand what the work is, you understand there's a lot of work. In a collaborative, we wear many, many hats. You know, I've been serving as the Director of Student Services as well as the Executive Director sometime. I take a huge role in the finances, huge role in the finances. We work, I work seven days a week now in this job. I think it's just, it's important that you have the finger on the pulse of what's happening in your district and your collaborative. You want to make sure that you're meeting the needs of your community as well. You know, we've developed some parent programs and parent support groups as well to bring our parents in. So that requires some night work. We've done, we've created cooking classes for some of our life skills students and students on the spectrum so that we can bring those students in, give them skills that they need as well as at the same time that we give our parents a break by doing a workshop for them. We had, I think last month, the workshop was physical education for your students because, you know, they need to be physically fit too. So really doing a lot of that weekend and night work, you know, I talked about, you know, it's important to see the superintendent at the football games or the girls' basketball games. It's important to go to the plays and show the kids and the parents that you care about what's happening with their children, you care about what's happening with them as well. You know, and I've flipped pancakes at, you know, the Rotary Club and all of those different activities too. So, I mean, honestly, it's really just an expectation. You've signed up for this type of position and you know that going in. I hope you know that going in. So, because you've done all the work and, you know, to perceive that we're, you know, even assistant superintendent, so they're all the time. So, so yes, thank you. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. That's our final list of questions. Tracy?
Yes, so I'm going to walk you out. Okay, a couple more are your needs and you'll hear from me while we're going to the see. All plans to make one decision soon, speaking of late nights. All right, thanks everyone. You need a minute or two?
Yeah.
Sure, and I'll have your next candidate. Yep.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Yep, and you already have another package.
All right. For those watching, I don't know how the video is coming across. We did have a problem with the camera earlier today and apparently it broke. It's, that camera in particular was 11 years old, someone said, 2014, right? Yeah, so 11-year-old camera, so that broke. So fortunately, one of the employees here had a camera, so we're using that tonight. I'm not sure how good it's going compared to the previous, but I don't know if that's going to fit into the budget or not for a new camera, we'll have to see. But hopefully, we've got something going, so you'll watch something. But it's not the same video quality you're used to, or maybe it's better because it looks like a newer camera. Now he's shaking his head, now it's definitely not better. All right, well, that's the story.
Can you share here a story, just so we can check her?
Sure. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good, thanks. So we're just going to do the same, we have a list of questions that I think you had there as well, so just take turns reading through them. So first up, why are you interested in this position in this district?
I think it would be an absolute joy to do this position. I come from Hopkinton, which is 30 minutes away, so the drive is absolutely wonderful. It cuts down my commuting time. Plus, I'm looking at the district as, I have been in a regional for 20, over two decades. And being in a regional, you learn everything about the nuances of regional that really are different than being a part of municipalities. And so I have learned about the importance of the role of the superintendent in bringing all of the communities together. I had three communities that were a part of that and I think I would absolutely delight in having two communities. I loved the work. I loved being visible and present and accessible. I was able to build strong relationships and clearly it was, I was very much at home in a regional. And I will also share that the name of the district was King Philip, which you probably have already seen from my resume. But the interesting story behind King Philip, I always like to know the, a little bit of the history of the school and the name. And King Philip was actually an Anglo-Saxon name and for Menomont, who was a Wampanoag chief. But I noticed that your high, your middle high school also has a Native American Indian chief name too. And so I thought that that was kind of fun for me. So, I also, the other perk, I was, the students enrollment was about 2,000. And this also would be a delight because it's a little smaller and I think that the, but the problems or the challenges that come with running any school district are still there and they would be very engaging for me to work with and collaborate with the people in Berlin and Boils and so I would love that. And I think additionally, or I think I took the day off, this is the first vacation day I have had in like a year. And I really wanted to do a nice job in my presentation at this interview because I would really like to be here. So, so I took the day off and I have thought about things and I prepared and I really, I enjoyed my day and it was also nice that it was so wonderful outside, but over here it kind of started to rain. So, there are many factors in terms of why I would enjoy being here. And this is, I feel like I'm an exceptional fit based on my background and not only am I just regional schools, but I have so many other aspects of what I could bring to the district. I have strengths in engineering, I have strengths in education, I have, you know, any kind of, I have multiple certifications at both the teaching level and multiple certifications across the admin level. So I would also be a good coach for anybody and be able to recognize any challenges that we might need to confront.
Thank you. Lisa?
Have you built strong relationships with parents, teachers, your admin team, town sweatboard, finance committees, capital committee and the school committee?
Okay. I saw that question and I listened to your video and I thought, you know what, that's like an entry kind of question, you know? And I actually prepared something, so this is how I would manage all of those relationships.
Okay, so we can text it up?
Oh, sure. And so, as not to lose focus, and I highlighted some aspects of this entry plan and I certainly have strong strength in building relationships. And so first, I would actually like to start with how I might build a relationship with you all on the student school committee. And basically, I would want to have trust, open communication and be able to share the leadership because there are things that we all need to work together on. I would be very open to conducting individual meetings, whether they're virtual or in person, at any time, whenever we feel that that's necessary. I'd also like to get to know you as people, so that would be good, good for me and good for you. In terms of regular communication, I would enjoy like sending you a Friday, a Friday weekly email every Friday. This is the state of things that are going on in the district, I want to keep you well-informed. And in terms of collaborating, collaboration, I'm a really frequent collaborator and I love to shape district goals, policies and priorities through retreats or workshops. I also love, no surprise, a both sides rule. And if there's something that I don't know, please feel free to share it. And likewise, if there's a crisis that happens at the school, I also would get actively in touch with you right away as soon as I'm able to do so. Okay? So, let's see, and then I, in terms of communicating, basically we look at also some training and professional development, but I always like to talk about groups with what they think they need because it does no good to provide anybody professional development that they don't want. So I always like to listen and hear what people's needs are. Then I've been actively involved in boards, town leadership and Fincoms. And so, you know, there's a part of getting to know the culture and the town, right? And so as I would extend myself to be open to invite invitations to have them come to our meetings and sort of virtual meetings on a monthly basis, I would have specific agendas so that they could get to know the school. And like specific agendas, you know, could certainly include like a facility to monitor update because that is often essential if you're going to be working on capital planning projects. I've had the pleasure this year of working on several capital planning projects. In fact, I actually served as interim facilities director because we lost our facilities director and we could, we didn't have, we weren't able through the interviewing process to find the right fit. I had an engineering background, it was a light lift, so I did it and in addition to my current job. I've also taken on in, as a regional school district person for another dual job role. I took on the assistant superintendent and middle school principal simultaneously before it became a permanent position and then I assumed that role permanently. So, I love to involve town people early in any type of budget because one of the things that's unique about regional schools is that while the school committee approves the budget, the, both towns must vote to pass the budget at a town meeting. So I know that and I think it is smart to just, you know, start, you know, educating and collaborating as early on as possible. So, going on, I'm not going to read every single bullet because if you'd like to, you can follow and ask me any questions. because if you'd like to, you can follow and ask me any question you would like. But very quickly, I love to be visible in schools. And part of that visibility, one of the things that I had fun with when my recent teacher said, hey, would you conduct a concert, be the guest conductor and work and conduct the finale? I said, sure, and I did. And I've also been absolutely present for high school pathways. One of our requirements is that our students that pursue like a STEM pathway or global studies pathway, that they absolutely do like a final presentation, a research-based presentation where they were given feedback by some of our, some of our strongest teachers. And also I would join in and also provide feedback. And it was like watching the students give like a mini master's level project where they were at the high school level. It was really great. So looking at that, I love to be in schools, in classrooms. I would make an attempt to visit every single classroom in the first nine days. Okay? As I meet with people, one of the things that I continue to try to find out, and this has been fascinating, I do like, I use a SWAB acronym, which is, it's almost funny, but that SWAB is actually strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. And I don't like the T. That's why I substituted for a B. And the B is barriers, you know? I just figured, I feel that that's less threatening. I can do that interview casually, informally. I can do that within five minutes. So and find out a lot of information, which we got to forward. And then you work with every single person. Also, being that this is a school district, the top responsibility, the top priority is while you're building, while you're building relationships, you have to pay attention to the teaching and learning that's going on because that's why we're here. That's the first mission of a school, to be one that is a place where students feel comfortable and learn and, and grow. So also, the last part of this would be community and engaging families. And I take that very seriously because kids can't learn unless they have strong teachers and strong adults behind them. And again, as I would get to know people, there are just so many types, those forms that you can do that really bring in people that get, get me excited and get the community excited. And so these are some of the things, like ideas, topics, that I would consider doing. And it basically means the superintendent, well, that's just, it's just me without a preconceived agenda at all. And, you know, through parent and caregiver, kind of kinds of forms too. You can look at what's really challenging people. Is the homework challenging? Is, you know, do they need, you know, some sort of help writing the new math program? So what, what, what do we need to do together to make that happen? Okay? And in terms of operation and fiscal systems review, again, I have already shared that I have been an interim director of facilities for six months while I did my current position. And I did my current position, I really felt that while I already had the business licensure, that I really needed for myself more hands-on experience crafting a budget. Okay? So in terms of that, I've built additional relationships. And I have specifically crafted a financial budget for the town. Worked with select boards, FinComs, to put it across the table and all the staff in the school to get a twenty-five point seven million dollar budget, which was very respectable. Okay? So that is my fun. And, and really, I, I enjoy every minute. So, so also in terms of the capital committee, I have had a significant amount of experiences developing a ten-year capital plan in the absence of the facility director. I also got my Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official License this year, which makes me able to put together bids, contracts, anything, and know the legal laws and the legal aspect of that. Okay?
Thank you.
So I'm sorry it was a long lead, but it was a good, it was a tour. And I respected, and on the, on the video, someone said, somebody's gonna need to, you know, maybe ask another part of that question or be reminded about. So I just said, okay, just put it all down. You can take it, look at it, have fun with it. And I can also speak more about anything on that list, but.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Next would be Megan, so I'll take that. So what are your greatest strengths and weaknesses as a leader?
Okay. I really, I spent the year developing my strength as a finance person. And I have not been, sorry, I have learned a significant amount. And I also had, always had a knack for working with spreadsheets. I found I'm extremely good in negotiations. And in my, in my, in my current position, I was fortunate because this year we had two unsettled contracts, which we are, were able to resolve. I learned to test my own ability. I can create models where I can simulate right on the spot what it's gonna look like at different percentages. I have also been able to really, the, our paraprofessionals were looking at a restructure, like complete life value of what we had in the past and create a new professional-looking structure. So I can also do that at the drop of a hat, you know? So I, I had, I learned to test myself and challenge myself. So what was, I would have considered before I started, a weakness now is a strong strength. I think my other strength is working collaboratively with teams to overcome barriers that lead to really good solutions. And some are, some are really, when they're retracted barriers in terms of really good solutions, I found that we were able to recreate. That was supposed to be the time, I'm supposed to walk in. But anyway.
I didn't say anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So in terms of strengths, we took a middle school schedule and really had to get on a total recreation of it. We had a big fiscal loss. Things didn't work anymore as they should have. And so we sat down with the full middle school team and then said, hey, you know, how can we look at our data points? How can we make this better? And we looked at things we wanted to change. We had a world language program we needed to make better because the students by the end of eighth grade were only getting three quarters of a year of world language. So plus they were only getting one, one language. So we separated it into two languages and we got them a full year. We also looked at revising the eighth grade math program so that our students were better prepared by the time they got to be a senior in high school to take calculus and take calculus A B or B C, which was excellent. We revised our intervention and enrichment programs. We had all that at the same time. And therefore, we had kids that were always learning and we fixed a block. And so we really came up with a far better solution than what had been in place. That was sustained for about thirteen years successfully and survived any group budget cut that we had. And so I really felt like, you know, in terms of working on something, it was really a collaborative team effort. I led that team, but we emerged with better things than we started. So, so that was really a good thing. And so the last thing is that I really love to build capacity because I like to get to know people. And it's not just about what they do during the day. I like to talk with them and really learn about what they feel they can do best. And sometimes I see things that they didn't necessarily see in themselves about what they can do best. So I have encouraged people to get other certifications. And like I had an English teacher who never thought of teaching history, but I thought she'd be great. And so I encouraged her to get all of the middle school licensure in humanities. And she loves it. She's now teaching history and doing very well and loving every day. So, and I also, in terms of building capacity, looking at, in twenty-fourteen, I saw that we needed, Deval Patrick came out with a recommendation that schools should have school resource officers. And we didn't have one. So I worked with the police chief and the, my then superintendent, because I was a principal, I saw the need. I reached out and recreated the position. But also, the position was created in a unique way so that we, I didn't want just a person that walked the beat around the school. I wanted somebody that was really engaged. The person who did, did training spreads on school safety. And we did an active shooter training, which was actually, that actually was a lot of preparation. They tried, the school resource officer talked directly to my staff to prepare them because I didn't realize, I knew it was important, but I didn't realize how much I had staff members that literally were thinking, like, they didn't want to do it. They didn't, you know? And so we gradually moved through the process. And she actually was absolutely excellent. And she, she actually was one of the people who wrote one of my letters of relegation. So, so that was a fun journey. So in terms of weaknesses as a leader, I mean, my weakness is that I really get almost, but I think it's also a strength, like you get too, I get very engaged by problems. I do. And so engaged that I think I sleep on them and they rotate in my brain. And so, and maybe that leads to a quicker solution. It definitely gives me less sleep, but, but I love to think. Okay?
Thank you, Beth. I'm just taking the next one, please.
How will you handle the balance of respecting longtime employees of the district's experience and familiarity with how things have always been done with new ideas, changes, and perspectives?
You have to do this. You have to honor all of the experience because you will be going at things blind. And I really, really, you know, if you have to, one of the things that I like to do sometimes is establish norms, like with, with groups as they come in. And I put the norms up on my office wall. And if there's opportunity, there's always opportunity. But I really think, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, needs to be generated, the norms need to be generated by a group. They need to value honoring past practice because anytime you sit with your union leadership board and they have some sort of, you know, something that they want to discuss, it becomes very much, well, what is past practice? You know, let's tell you about past practice and let's make sure. Again, I will talk to my principals to make sure that we have a very solid past practice condition that will support whatever the union is wanting to talk about. So, so I believe strongly in that. We, and I can give you an example, and I can try to make it interesting. Co-teaching, is, are you all familiar with co-teaching? Or should I explain it?
Team teaching.
It's, yeah, it's where you balance a special educator and a general educator in the same classroom to provide assistance to all students. And if you're looking at the visual after they've been paired together for a while, it should appear seamless. You wouldn't know who's the special educator and you wouldn't know who's the general educator. So we were trying to address the gap between the, and basically, we were trying to increase the performance of our special education students, which is always a challenge. So, so we learned, as we worked on the past practice, that we tried, the school had tried to do co-teaching before and earlier period. People had been turned off and they're, by that, and it almost became a barrier to the reintegration of it or practice. And we looked at, we looked at why it became a turnoff because we had people that were a part of it. They had no common planning time between the special educator and the regular educator. It was always a match of convenience. When you work with somebody that intensely, you had better like them because otherwise you're gonna end up in divorce. You know? So there's that. And then the other thing that we learned was that as they, so common time matched. And then, oh, and there had been very little training. And so what happened was, the root of all this, the general education teacher felt like the primary person in terms of the lead person. And the special education teacher felt like playing, that she was playing or he was playing second, second place. And that wasn't really a firmning for, for the special education teacher. And it perpetuated the, the piece where there's some, there's always some sort of tension between special ed and general ed. And so once we put that together, what I did was I took a team that was interested in trying again. And so I took a team to see a national expert that I knew was gonna be wonderful. And she was absolutely wonderful. Then, so I had a core group of people that were interested. I looked and I actually called her up after the training and I said, can, I want to really get a great person who can train. And, and she was in Florida. And, and so we worked on a, we worked out a situation where I had to actually go virtually and teach some of her PhD classes in STEM, which I did. We did that version. But she came, she had a daughter going to Boston College. And she came once a month and she did some trainings so that by the end of the year, I had a core group of people who really could function with all the different, there's six ways you can do co-teaching. And so, you know, she was very good and made them feel very comfortable. She visited classes as we got this going. And we made sure to recast the schedule so that it allowed for common planning time. So people chose their matches. They had better training and it was successful. And people are so excited now to be doing this. And the data showed that it is boosting achievement for all students. So we looked at the specific strands on the MCAS math. And we noticed that the performance of all students was much better and stronger. And we felt comfortable with it. So, so that was good. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, please.
How could you create an environment where staff felt safe to approach you with problems?
You know, no staff member has never felt uncomfortable approaching me with a problem. I will say that. But it's part of who I am. I'm not, I like to be visible at the same time approachable. And I choose to work when I don't have confidential things that I am doing. I choose to work, laptop can come with me. Phone can come with me. I might choose a school library where I sit down and I get my work done. And I might choose a staff lounge where I get my work done. There are desks that we used to have in the hallway where our hallway teachers sat when they did their hallway duties. And so I really, people thought I had a super. And so I really, people thought I had a super hallway duty as a part of my job. But it was just really, it was what I enjoyed doing, like I enjoyed, I could get my work done and be visible. And, and people would approach me and say, wow, the administration is so supportive. Because I see you in the, you know, frequently. Um, but the other thing is you have to provide to make sure that things keep moving. You have to have as a superintendent, you have to have several, um, groups where you have a planned agenda, where there are, um, and actually the Google agendas work great. And, um, people, um, you have your central office leadership team, you have an instructional leadership team. You have a district leadership team, which is like the, like, um, you know, the central office to keep the, some of the principals and some of, um, the facilities director and, um, technology director and things like that. And the groups, the secret really is you can't just plan a meeting like happenstance with no agenda. You have to have an agenda, but the secret is really frequent meetings. Um, um, so you have those kinds of meetings at least every other week. Like in a month, you might have two meetings. And so people feel comfortable, um, the more that you have these frequent meetings talking. And while there is a flow and agenda about specific things that are important, like one of our goals this year that we worked on was looking at five students and having teachers also look at five students that were not performing successfully. And to even look at what you could do to motivate change in those five students. So there's a, um, a method to this. It's consistent and it's, it's frequent, um, and, um, and people will, will come. And the other thing you have to do is be actionable and follow up on whatever is a concern. Um, for example, like in, I would tell you in early August, and I will not forget it. I had a custodian reach out to me and she said, I'm really worried that I'm really not gonna, like she was the head custodian at the high school. She said, I'm really worried I'm not gonna get the school, um, opened for the teachers in good shape on time. And so I said, well, what, what can we do to gather? And so she said, well, let's, she said, I've been really short-staffed all summer and you don't have manpower and I don't, and my equipment is broken. And I, I, you know, for like, you know, scrubbing the floors. And I, I thought, okay, those, and the, the facilities director had said, don't talk, you know, report everything to me. But he wasn't really doing anything. And, and so, um, so we fixed it. I said, would you, I said, what do you, what are your suggestions? She said, I need some more people. And so we looked at hiring, um, a team to come in and do like three days' worth of labor, um, for the custodial. And we set goals, I calculated the square footage with her. Um, it, the, the price tag on that ended up being nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Uh, and there's a reason for that in terms of what you know about, um, goods and service laws and what you can do when you bid out something. Um, so anyway, they appreciate, she appreciated that so much. The teachers were able to get in, we didn't have any stressors. The school can't, you can't say, okay, we're gonna open a day late. We're gonna open a week late because you have to have a certain number of days. Um, and we had the calendar how it was published and so, so anyway, so that's like, you know, anytime you have things that you can be actionable, you need to just follow up right away. And that's how we did it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Um, so like a question that I will ask is, how do you handle conflict situations within the school districts?
There is a conflict somewhere every day, you know? And some are really small, um, but some are really large. And so, um, first of all, I'm very calm. You need to be always an active listener because there's always something that you need to hear more of the, what, why is someone so upset? Right? And so I have always, um, valued also people's due process. You know, you have to really hear and make a space for them to tell you what's, what they think is the matter. Um, so ultimately you make your decisions that are in the best interest of students and you make your decisions that are always in the best interest of the district too. So you have to have that balance. Um, I would want to look at mandated trainings because in those trainings, people commit and they acknowledge that they are familiar with harassment and reporting for civil rights, um, what conditions go into those things, ethics. Um, and so I would want to make sure also that the right, that the staff members have, you have to list who the staff members are that are responsible for those things. And so, um, I would want to make sure that those procedures were in place and anybody that needed to do investigations or hear reports was trained. And if we didn't have somebody that was trained or feel like they needed, I'd, I'd bring them in for a refresher. I'd bring a legal consultant for refresher. So, uh, again, I think it's all about people want to be heard. You really need to hear them and it doesn't always change what it is. Um, and in many cases it, it doesn't. But I dealt with anything from, you know, from a cafeteria person claiming civil rights, um, harassment, from the cafeteria manager to a student who I was, who, uh, it seemed like he physically kind of made a choke, uh, choking, caused a choking incident on the school bus to, um, you know, and, uh, you know, I've dealt with everything that you can possibly imagine. So, okay?
Thank you. Uh, this one's back to me. So, uh, please speak to your skills and experiences in budget process. Please address your experience with regional school budgets if applicable.
Okay.
I know you already spoke to a little bit.
Yes. All right. So let me tell you about, um, more of our challenge with three, three districts. Um, first of all, I will tell you that I have, we had three very different procedures at our three very different town meetings. Two of our, um, our original agreement says that two out of the three towns needed to come to an agreement. Um, the two towns that were most, um, in, uh, basically, we were not necessarily sure which way they were going to go, um, met the same night with their town meeting in different towns at the same time. And so we had that, um, challenge, um, we had to split up our district team. And one was at one town meeting and the other was at the other town meeting. And we did this for six years and, uh, I still don't know if they changed. I don't know, but that was not ever advantageous. The challenge of a regional school budget, first of all, school committee, school committee can adopt, but they can't vote against town floor. The, um, other challenge is that the chapter seventy, um, funding formula, um, basically you have to, um, take a percentage of that and each town has an assessment that they pay. Um, and so you are smart if you start the networking with the financial committees and, um, the town managers, um, very early on because you don't want to get deep into a process and have someone tell you, we're not going to approve more than, you know, two point five percent. Um, so while the chapter seventy amount is, and I also have experience of being in municipality. And I, I did craft my budget in municipality this year. Um, but they don't have the type of, the same type of assessments that are in the regional school district. And also they, um, you know, so they can feel free to, um, work with, um, they can work with that budget, um, but the major revenue stream is, is chapter seventy-eight. And that's become a little bit contentious lately because it's not keeping pace with the inflation. And there are all sorts of groups, um, that have gone to meetings at the state house. And there was a meeting in Amherst, um, to address the need for a different funding formula or revisions to the existing funding formula. So, um, the other parallel with municipalities and with regional school budgets is there are two different, um, like there's an excess and deficiency fund for the regional school district. You can only maintain five percent of your budget in that excess and deficiency fund. And you can apply that to each region's off or each town's offs. You can use it to offset, um, each town's assessment in terms of the budget. Um, so the other parallel in municipalities is the municipality has free cash. Um, and so that's, you know, so it's a little bit, I don't want to say it's easier in a municipality, but it really is easier because you have one budget, one town, you know, and one chapter, you know, one, um, chapter seventy revenue stream. And so all you have to worry about is what the town manager says their funding amount is and then how you pass the budget through, um, the FINCOM and the select board. And the school committee gets to hold on that budget. So regionals are really fun, they're, but they really are more complicated and people really need to understand the budget process.
Thank you. Uh, last but not least, Lori, please.
So my question is long, but it's not a very long answer for you. It gives you a little rest of your voice. Um, we are currently in the middle of a phase shift. Our current interim superintendent has had to do much more than just his superintendent duties. He's trying to make sense of last year's budget and finding things like job descriptions and professional practices that need updating or creating as some don't exist. He typically works well beyond seven PM on weekdays. The ten's town meetings involve Berlin and Boylston that often run until nine or 10:00. And he often spends weekends at central office. Do you feel you are equipped to continue his work? Would you be able to dedicate as much time to turning our district around so we could attract a full-time superintendent next year?
So absolutely yes. Okay? And, um, you know, in, in fact, I, I certainly would invest, um, not only as an interim, but I would apply for the full-time because I have additional years to go and would love to do the job full-time permanent. Okay? Um, so, um, you know, you, you gave some interesting examples. Um, you know, when you talk about job descriptions, now that, um, I had that pleasure of updating every single job description from nineteen ninety-six to move it forward to the present in my regional school district. Because yes, there were an amazing number that, um, were not updated, not approved. I worked on every single one. The perk of that was not, I, I, that I got to work with lots of people and, uh, the update. And that, um, by the time it was done, the HR director had a great resource to pull job descriptions from. I, as a person, learned a lot from what the different jobs did, um, which, um, I thought I knew, but you know, as you started to go into the minutia of it, um, you really learn a lot about, um, and appreciate, you grow more in your appreciation of what different jobs do. Um, so I have had that experience and certainly I would be, um, nothing's incorrect, but at least I would be well-informed and, you know, what to look for. Um, and I, again, I always, like, I always value, you really don't want to go in and change things. You want to look at what's there and sometimes you have to look, um, really hard at what's there. And sometimes you have to ask continued questions. And so I don't mind asking those continued questions. I don't mind looking hard at what's really there. And I, I, I gotta tell you, I was driving home after a school committee meeting that I had this year. And it was like twelve, twelve fifteen AM. So I, like, I have a very supportive family. My son is going to college next year and my husband is very supportive. He knows like, you know, it's, it's, but I will say this job would really, um, it would give me one extra hour a day that I might be able to either choose to reinvest back in the work or I'm likely to choose to be able to do some family things. So, um, so this would be very, uh, much a great fit for me. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay.
That's, that's our last question. So thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much. I, I really appreciate you getting to me. You are.
You want me to pronounce this?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. Kyle, you good?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Allen, again, thank you for coming in. We have a list of questions that each of us will ask you. We've asked the other two, so I'll just start, please. Why are you interested in this position in this district?
So if you, your wife, I know that most of you know my resume and my, but if I could just give a little bit of opening and then tie that into that first question. I know I heard possibly in a conversation with those people, excuse me, hadn't seen my resume, so I wanted to make sure it's important. I go over my experience as an educational leader. Been doing this job for about 35? Yes, now, in education. Started out as a speech and language pathologist, left there and became a teacher at the elementary level. From there, I was asked to be the assistant principal at Worcester-Potts-Batten School, truly inner-city school nestled between two low-income housing projects, probably one of the lowest-performing schools in the state and now one of the highest-performing schools in the state. It's based upon Howard-Governor's theory of multiple intelligence. So we're using that whole right brain. I was there for 13 years, still lucky, still one of the highest-performing schools in the state of Massachusetts. From there, I was asked to become the principal of City New Discovery School, 700-pupil school by mingle. So that was definitely a challenge, but a rewarding experience as well, too, was expanded learning day school. What that means is you started that day at 8:10 and we ended at 4:10 every day. It was a grant that we wrote and were able to, be able to get for having long days for our students. After that, I was asked by a superintendent to become the director of curriculum and professional management for Worcester Public Schools, where I oversee about 25,000 students, about 3,000, about 3,000 staff. And what that was, was overseeing MCAS, EVS placement, all curriculum that went from pre-K to grade six. All that was part of the job of being there, also teacher certification and recertification. So it was definitely a rewarding experience. I did that for about three years before I became superintendent in Camden-Moehlem, Regional School District. I was there for about six years as a superintendent. Retired, I was retired for probably a little over a month before I became the director of admissions at a private, better than capital, private Catholic school. Definitely a different experience, quite a lot. It was great to be able to work with families and admissions students to that. Sitting there doing my job at Better E when I got a call from the chair, Megan Riddle saying, would you apply for the job of interim superintendent of schools for Berle and Boston? And that was literally my first day was sometime in August 24th, way around that. Had a few days to transition with the previous superintendent and then just hit the job right. So I have been here for a little over seven months as the interim superintendent of schools. So why do, you know, why am I interested in this position? I go back to the title of being interim, right? I hide interim principals, I hide interim assistant principal, I hide even interim teachers, that we call marchers subs. And what I hide in the past, the number-one thing we said to them is, just keep the shit afloat. That's your number-one job when we're hiring interim. That's not the message I heard when I came here as interim superintendent. There were things that needed to be worked on right away. One of them was the budget. I knew that loud and clear when I came in here. The other one was processes and procedures. We had some legal things going on and my mission was to try to heal between the two towns in school. Those are my jobs. Not telling you anything that you don't know, but our budget was in sort of disarray. Right when I came here, we had no director of finance, we had no, we had a treasurer that was retiring. There was no, there was a payroll person and a accounts payable person that weren't able to do the job. I'll leave it at that. So within a short period of time, I had to get those people in place. We were in trouble financially, right? I came into a first P row, right? And everyone has heard this story that went on. I was here a little bit a week. We paid some people our first-round teachers, others we didn't pay. Others, we paid the full salary for the entire year we paid. We had bills that weren't paid. All those things had to take place. I went to pay a note. We didn't pay our postage through the summer, so I wasn't going to have postage. Our garbage wasn't being picked up. So that was a priority. It truly was. Please don't misunderstand also, we had this part of education saying, we're concerned. We're in trouble. We think we're going to be looking at a one-twelfth budget for you. People fully understand what that means, but that means they give us an allowance and not being, kill, kill us about that, but that's what it is. Every month they say, here's your money, move on a portion of that. That's not the best way to run the district, certainly not the best way to be able to pay our staff and recruit high-quality teachers as well, too. Since then, we were able to hire a full-time director of finance operation, hire a payroll person, hire an accounts payable person. To be able to get people to move their positions in the middle of the year, especially in education, is a tough thing to do. So people will leave in the work that we're doing right now and we're getting into a good spot. Do we still have work to do? We absolutely do. No questions. We're still finding things that we still need to make right. And that's the number-one thing. We all, there's a joke that superintendent says, not really a good joke, but it's a joke. It says, if your curriculum director makes a mistake, you'll get yourself in a little bit of trouble. But if your business person makes a mistake, you'll get yourself arrested, right? And so that's why we always need to make sure that that's the foundation of our district as well, too. The other part, we had some legal issues. We solved those and moved on. Healing between the towns, working on that, right? We're seeing, you're hearing from both towns and saying, we want this to continue. We like the work that's been done so far by Alan and his team. We want that work to continue both in Berle and Boston. So when you ask me, you know, the question is, why am I interested in, I want to continue to work. That's my job as an interim, as an interim superintendent. Maybe that we got about, I've done this job, I've retired from this job. My job is to get it so that the next person who comes on board is going to say, this is a great school district. These things are in place. Because these are things that have to be in place. This is a really good school district and I really enjoyed it on here. But my number-one thing is to get this ready so when you post this job for a permanent superintendent, it will be in a spot that someone will come in that will be able to do this job and do it really, really well. That's my job. That's my goal to make sure that takes place.
Thank you. Lisa, would you ask the next question?
How would you build strong relationships with parents, teachers, your admin team, councilor for finance committee, capital committee, and the school committee?
Sure, that's a pretty, a lot of that question. It's all about relationships and all about having those conversations and monitoring issues. Some of those are working really well, right? I've been here eight months. There are certainly others that I need to be working on, but there are sort of priority other things I have to be working on. Like I just talked to you about the budget. But when I talk to you about those building of relationships, I'm at those select board meetings. I'm at those capital meetings. I'm at those obviously school reunions, providing information. They're seeing me, they're asking me questions about that. Those relationships have started to develop more and more, right? They see me, they know I'm available, they ask questions. We're really trying to get that transparency thing taken care of. Our admin team is, I meet weekly with them, not always, sometimes, right? Sometimes it's bi-weekly. We meet bi-weekly as an admin team as well, too. Do I need to get better at that? Absolutely. That's a job that I continue to work on. And most interim superintendents, that's really the number-one job, build those relationships. But many times, our meetings, when I'm meeting with admin, are very structured agendas because we have to take care of the budget. We have to take care of a number of things that have processes and procedures in place. But those relations develop over time. And certainly, if you seem for me to be the interim for next year as well, too, certainly that'll be one of my priorities that I'll be working on is fostering those relationships and continue to foster those relationships. But I just push back a little bit on that one part of that question. The part that's missing in there is the students, right? We ask that question about everybody else, but not students. That's why we're here. That's why we're sitting in this job every day for our kids in our schools. That's the number-one thing. And what I can proudly say is when I walk through these schools, students know I am. I'm involved in what's taking place with them. Whether we have the championship Super Bowl game, whether we scoop an ice cream here, whether we have to play on the weekends, whether we walk into the corridors, the kids saying, are you having the family feud right now, Mr. Gannon? They know I am. And those relationships with students are so important. And those are the things that I cultivate as well, too. I think it's extremely important. Don't forget about our students because there are no one reason why we do this job teaching every day as well.
Thank you. This is Megan's question that I'll ask. What are your greatest strengths and weaknesses as a leader?
A humble question. Greatest strengths and greatest weaknesses? Depending, of course, who you'd ask. If you're asking me, my greatest strengths and weaknesses, compassion and hard work. I think those are my greatest strengths. I love the work I'm doing, as you can tell, whether it be, you know, working with students, whether working with a private Catholic school, working as a superintendent. I love this work, yet compassion and hard work. Those are the two things I also look for when I'm hiring a new employee. You gotta have compassion, hard work. Anything else, I can teach you. I can teach you. We can get professional learning for you. We can work with you. We can mentor you. We can model. You need to have that compassion. Have that work ethic if you're going to do it. And I don't think you can question my compassion and my hard work for this job. So I think those are my strengths. My weaknesses, again, depending on who you ask, but my number-one weakness is probably sometimes I'm just moving too fast. There are a lot of things we gotta get done. And sometimes there are instant gratifications, instant answers from us, whether it be a parent, a student, a teacher, right? Principals, Select Board, I'm on the phone dating with Kristen Reubert from Berle in the, in the, they want answers, right? And we need to move, right? And sometimes I just move a little bit too fast, right? And my job is to slow down, but people want answers. And there's the superintendent, but there's no assistant superintendent. There's no human resource. It's me on there, right? So sometimes we'll look at the answers and sometimes I move too quick. And sometimes I make a mistake. We do. And if there's ever a profession where we can make a mistake, it's this job. It's this field. We're supposed to be teaching our kids it's okay to make mistakes as long as you learn from these mistakes. But instead, we're being a boss of the anxious generation because we're making our kids so nervous about what it looks like to be perfect on social media. We shouldn't be in by example. It's like, it's okay to make a mistake as long as you'll learn from them. I have something to give you this week, 20 years ago, this is the paper still. And this is the whole beginning. It is not the mistakes that define us, but the choices that we make afterwards, I do. Like, that's what education should be all about. That's what this job is all about. So sometimes I make mistakes. It's only because I'm moving too fast sometimes. And that's one thing I have to get better and work on that. And so if you ask me my weaknesses, my attention is always good. I put my head on my pillow every day and say I did the very best I could do each and every day. But sometimes I have to say to people, you know what? I'm bad. So those are my strengths. Those are my current weaknesses as well, too.
Thank you. Beth, please.
How will you handle the balance of respecting longtime employees of the district's experience and familiarity with how things have always been with new ideas, changes, and perspectives?
Great question. We don't do as well as we should do and memorialize and things. We have some great experienced teachers, John Campbell, experienced principal. We have directors that are experienced, have been here a long time. It's sort of a joke, but not really. We say, where can I see that? Where is it memorialized, right? And we call it sort of a focal one because it's there, we just don't have it memorialized. What we're doing today is tomorrow's history, right? We need to memorialize what we're doing and put it somewhere so we have policies and procedures. So I don't want anyone five years from now to say, Tommy, we're the interim superintendent. How do we understand this? Because it's not memorialized for terms of hiring, for payable. Like, we, anyone that's been to the central office, we have cabinets go long, cabinets go long. File cabinets unbelievable, but no processes and procedures. So finally, we have an accounts payable system where Arnold and Patty are doing incredible work there. We finally have a system where you gotta have a requisition, you gotta have a purchase order. Here's how it's been paid. And guess what? We're putting it all electronic. So we don't have to have all this cabinet's room, which really don't know what's in what calendar, right? We have it all there. We just don't know where it is. We gotta get procedures in place. And that's how we're memorializing the good work that happened then. We brought, and I can say this pretty comfortably for the first time, all our secretaries together. Brought them upstairs to Central Office. Patty and Arnold brought them in, brought them Chinese food, brought them lunch. She said, tell us what's working, what you've done for years, and what still needs to be done. And that's the work we're doing now. And I would say to them, they think the work that we're doing right now and memorializing it isn't important. Systems and processes in place. And that's the work we need to do to memorialize the past and get it from the future.
Thank you. Jess, would you please ask the next question?
How could you create an environment where staff felt safe to approach you with problems?
So that's something we gotta figure out together. I think that's something that takes time, right? And I say to you, I try that each and every day, right? My principals and directors know. They can text me day or night. They email me day and night. They also know that I don't do a good job in terms of doing that as well, too, sometimes. I'm emailing them, texting them late at night, which is probably not really a good thing. But that's certainly something that evolves, certainly something that found the role of the interim superintendent for next year. I'll be working on that as well, too. That takes time, right, and trust and be able to have those OBI conversations. Again, when I meet with my admin, when we meet, it's all we gotta take care of. This, 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 and this, and this. I've been here a little over seven months and trying to get that district in place. So sure, I need to develop more, spending more time and talking and getting those things done. But I also would say our principals and directors say, we need this to be operating and working as well, too. We need this to be taken place as well, too. So will I work on that? Yes. Do I need to continue to work on that? Yes. There's two ways. Absolutely. And do I need to get better at that? I do. But that will hopefully happen over time. And that takes time to build the trust and build the relationships as well, too.
Thank you. This is Megan's final question, so I'll ask it. How do you handle conflict situations within the school district?
So we have a district of 1,116 students. We have a district of 238 employees. We are a human resourced job, right? We deal with humans all day long. If you don't think for a second, we have conflict every single day, get a stake in summer here, summer here. My very first day, as Nicole will attest to, I had parents light up my door saying, we want to talk about this, 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 this. I left their negotiations meeting. There's a deal of conflict over there. Again, small. 99, 9% of the time, you don't know what's going on. You don't know about those conflicts, how to resolve them, by listening and learning from them, right? That's my job and part of that as well, too, to handle those conflicts and be able to get them resolved so that people walk away happily. Again, most of them, you don't know about it all, but they're out. Whether it be a parent or a teacher, a parent or a principal, principal or a principal, teacher or a teacher's student, all of them, working with the union, working with all those parties involved to make sure the resolve those conflicts the best we can. But one of the things you're gonna hear me say is, we need some sort of A-CH. We have Patty Spinesberg, who does incredible work, but she's also payroll, trying to get everyone paid, trying to figure out our bills for the best. But we add on recharge over our pair of titles, Walter. But I'll be presenting this to you later on after, hopefully, we see where our budget's gonna be, if what needs to be at that meeting May 5th. We need to be able to get maybe some sort of consult, consult with A-CH, right? We have that many people that walk through this building, they're billings every single day, right? We need a system in place that we can just sort of channel and get some help. We're having Kidney Manaus tomorrow come in and give us some professional training as well, too, with all of our principals and directors as well, too. We need to make sure, because we make big mistakes, that can get us in some trouble sometimes. But please know there's conflict every day and that's part of my job, I tell them. The other part about it is, after leaves the principals' building, that is me. There's no assistant superintendent, there's no, there's no assistant superintendent. There's no assistant superintendent, there's no other people that are there, so it goes directly to me. So that's part of my job that I do every day, but the majority of the time you just don't learn because we handle them. But I try my very best to listen and learn, and learn every single day and hopefully come away that we all feeling okay about this conflict and we can move on. We're a human resource environment. We have this many people working here each year.
Thank you. So could you speak to your skills and experiences in the budget process? Please address your experience with regional school budgets if applicable.
So I, not much, no, sorry, that's not time for a joke today, sorry about that. So I was superintendent in Hinderwood County for six years with a regional school district, very similar to Merle and Boston. As I've come on board here, certainly that's probably been my priority, is getting our district in place. We have a regional school district that's very complicated. The formula is very complicated. I think people still understanding it, it's only been a period of time. I know it's not a favorable response, but I'd say we need to revisit the regional agreement. The complications of budgetarily is sort of confusing, right? People wanna give money for capital, people wanna give money for different areas of the budget. But how does that impact the relationship where it's handled as well too? The shit, right? The regional agreement is very, very complicated, but it involves the budget. And I would say all day long, I am very fortunate to have a director of finance that is great. I have a great finance world. But it's also my responsibility as a superintendent to make sure I understand that and know that, to be able to have those conversations. When I'm walking through the parking lot today, April stops and talks to me, right? When I'm at the town meetings, when I'm at a different event, when I'm going to get my coffee at Dunkin' Donuts and the gentleman says to me, "Hey, talk to me about this budget right now, superintendent." You know, it's a curse, but we're in a well time as well because they identify me more with that. I need to be able to have that conversation. But I also need to have that conversation when the towns in the back and say, "You gotta cut a million dollars," right? That's not a numbers game. That's the job of a superintendent, he needs to know that budget. So I can sit down and say, instead of just saying, "I'm cutting our, I'm cutting music, I'm cutting phys ed, phys ed, and that's done with it." You need to know a budget, understand it, and be able to really dissect it and make sure you're doing the right cuts. Because it's getting, you're affecting people's, it's HR, right? You're affecting people's livelihoods. So you not only need to be able to understand that budget, the numbers wise, but you gotta understand the overall impact of it. The curriculum that goes along with that, making reductions, right? All of that. And if people wanna give money, where's the best way to use our money? And what's the thing that's gonna have the least impact on our students? Every cut we make has impacted our students. But as a superintendent, understands the budget and understands curriculum, those are important conversations. Aaron and I, Patty and Arnold, every day, every day about 10, 12 times we'll be just to talk about this budget, see where we're going. Any little move we make, how's that gonna affect and how's that gonna affect our students? That's my job. So I understand the budget, but there's a bigger piece of it. You gotta understand the whole dynamics of being superintendent, understanding the all the tasks on that as well too. When you have to add some additional to my funding, which we always hope that will happen, when that money comes in, where are we gonna best use that money? When we have to make cuts, we're gonna make those cuts as well too. So I have experienced that. And I've also had the experience, as you can know, of hiring people, right? So we're sitting in an interview, hiring director of finances. You better know what questions to ask, you better know the correct answers as well too. Sometimes you can sort of fake things, right? Like I sit in a campus BC class, I pray for the teacher to come back in, I was coming from the bathroom because if a kid asks me a question, the campus BC way out of my lane, right? And I'm okay, I own that. But I better know the finances because that's the foundation of our school district. We need to make sure of that. That's the foundation, everything else is based on that. I have to be able to make sure I have the things that teachers need so they can have it in their classrooms to provide for our kids. And also, how's that equitable across our dishes from Boston and Berlin and town? How's that?
Thank you. Lori Lacks and Alix, please, would you ask, I'm ready.
Okay, so my question is long, this is a quiet, long answer. Could be a little rest. You're gonna, it may be familiar. We are currently in the middle of a big shift. Our current interim superintendent has had to do much more than just his superintendent duties. He is trying to make sense of last year's budget and finding things like job descriptions and professional practices that need updating or creating as some don't exist. Typically works well beyond 7:00 PM on weekdays, 10's town meetings in both Berlin and Boylston that often run until 9:00 or 10:00. And he often spends weekends in central office. Do you feel that you are fit to continue his work? Would you be able to dedicate as much time to turning our district around so we could attract a full-time superintendent next year?
I looked in the mirror the other day as a kid, looking pretty old there lately. But so my goal as an interim is to get this district in place where a superintendent can come in and work smarter and harder. That's my job. Do I start every morning? Finally, we have a flag outside of the central office in the police station. Every morning I go out there and I put that flag up, right? We finally have a flag up there. It's like, what we should. And every day, at the end of the day, which I'll leave after I come here, I'll go back and bring it. I am not a center, I am not a corner office superintendent. I am not. And if that's what you're looking for, I'm not, you got it, right? There are some of my colleagues that are corner office superintendents, so what that means, they go in their office. Office is always in the corner when you're superintendent for some reason and they get their work done and good for them. But that's not the work that I like doing. Does that what we need to get done? Yes. Do I need to get those things in place? But I love being in schools. I stopped my wanting in schools. I apologize to Nicole over and over again. She tries to manage me the best she can by staying in the central office. I call her, truce her yesterday afternoon. She picks up the phones, about 10 kids behind me, I yell and I change your schedule, we want the superintendent to be at this event at 10 o'clock this morning. Which I got to, but Nicole has to rearrange it because that's where I need to be, right? I need to be in schools, I need to be at the events, I need to be there, so that's what I should be doing. That's how I really see the work that should be getting done, he should be getting done, right? So I'm trying to get that, those things that's required for me, but I gotta get this district in place. All this work still needs to be done, all of this. And that's my goal for next year, is to get it in place so the next superintendent comes on board and work smarter and harder. We have professional learning done, right? We're ready for our calendar for next year, what we're working on. This book you deal now, and I give Sally and the team credit, the author is Katie Novak. Not Novak, Novak. Guess who our guest speaker is for the beginning of next year? Katie Novak. We're gonna have high-quality professional learning for next year. We got the author of this book coming to our district to talk to our teachers about universal science as a learning. Incredible. And that's it. All this work still needs to be done. Looking at projections and our enrollment, that's my job still as a superintendent. All the things about being in schools, I love it. It's the best part of my job. I delight in it, I enjoy it. I love scooping ice cream with the kids, I love going up to the different events, I love going to the basketball games. I love writing notes afterwards and saying, "Congratulations, great job." Love having a little breakfast when the team just wants it. All of that is important, really is important. But all this still needs to be done, all of this. Right here, this is our MCAS course, but just from Berlin, Boylston for the last five years. This is the stuff I'm looking at when I go back on the weekends and look at, how we can improve these schools? How are we compared to other districts? This is something that we get, that we really gotta look at, and we're not. This is the work I still need to do all the time. So yes, I'm trying to get this all in place. We need it, we need a strategic plan, right? All of this needs to get in place. So yes, I'm hoping that I have it all in place so the next superintendent will come and say, "We're good. We got these things in place," and we memorialize them as well too. So I am working hard to get it all done because that's what he charged me to do as the interim superintendent. Not to just keep the ship afloat to get these things in place. So when we're posting that job, the next superintendent, they're gonna come back and say, "We're ready." The one goal I want to have for next year is the same thing that took place when I left KIUMO. Where the superintendent got up there during summer meetings, sponsored it and said, "I want a next superintendent here to lead me in this." That's my goal, that's my only goal besides all of this for next year. To make sure that I have this district in place, the superintendent can come and say, "This is the place I wanna be, this is the place I wanna work." So I'm putting the time into it now because it's gonna hopefully play a down the road. And I'm putting it in so it's more relaxed, and so we'll have these things in place. I'm digging into the data, we're looking at our enrollment projections, we're looking at how the roles and clarity of principals and administrators. We have professional learning. We're gonna be reading another book, which I have for all school community next year, is this book. It's a phenomenal, phenomenal, I have a feature on your spirit work, right? It talks about collaboration, and we've talked about that. And that's one thing I haven't done this year with you guys. It's a book study, which I promised you, but I purchased all these books so we have them. And the best way to get transparency, which everyone seems to be asking us for, is collaboration and communication equals transparency. Sort of a great way for us to start as a district. So if I get these things in place, we'll be ready for the next superintendent to come in here and be present. That's my goal.
All right, thank you very much. That was our final question.
Can I get a closing?
You want, do you have a closing?
I do, that's okay. This has been one of the most rewarding jobs I've had in seven and a half eight months. But it's also probably one of the hardest jobs I ever had. But I enjoyed it tremendously. And my work will continue to get it ready for the next superintendent to come aboard. I thank you for the opportunity to work with you. This school community's been wonderful, right? They've been supportive, they've been working with me, I've been very, very fortunate. And I can honestly say that, and I'm saying that publicly, and I've worked with quite a few school communities. I've been very thankful. Got a great staff, we got great admin, we got great students. We wanna be able to get this ready for the next superintendent to come aboard. My job is to create a culture, and I know it falls a lot on me, you know? Difficult conversations happened. Last Monday was probably a difficult conversation. I think a lot of you are on board on that conversation that took place in Boston. I understand that. But that's part of my job. But one thing I do need to fall as far, is during that conversation, some questions arose about people that were hired in the central office. Appreciate Mike that you stood up and said something about that. We talked about climate and culture. That was a tough culture and climate if you didn't walk in on Tuesday morning, right? The staff that works there. Every single person in this district, their job is to provide a high-quality education. Whether it be parents, finance, payroll, teachers, students, school community, everyone. My job is to make sure that we're providing a high-quality education, retaining them as well too. But it's all of us that need to be doing this, right? Climate and culture falls on me as a superintendent, but I would say it falls on all of us because it's all of our jobs. I go back to the autobiography of John F. Kennedy, and you've probably heard me say this story before. He's walking through NASA, he sees someone pushing a room, he says, "What is your job here?" And the gentleman cheering someone says, "My number one job is to get a man moving." Every single person that works either at central office, as an administrator, as a teacher, as a parent, as school community, as select boards, FinCom, capital. My number one job is to provide a high-quality education for our kids. So we all need to do it together. I own the face of the district and I'll take that all day long, but I also need us to work together to this. Because that's all of my jobs right now. So thank you for the opportunity, I hope I answered all your questions. I'll be there as well too.
Thank you. All right. Tracy, I know you're gonna walk Mr. Gann, how, but do you have anything to advise us before we start deliberating or?
Um, I mean, I can pop in, I can walk him right out and pop right back in. I mean, there's a couple of different processes that you can make. It's one that I think outside of the school's framework is that each of you name your top candidates. It'll take a minute to look through your stuff first. It's maybe a little bit more even heated, but it just sort of got some emotion. Also, of course, you are deliberating in public, because always you get things you remember and being recorded, so it's all about what you say.
Thank you.
I don't know that.
All right, thanks Tracy. We'll go through our notes and we'll start with the back.
Sure. Different names in it.
Yeah. You guys are all awesome.
Thank you.
Send you, everybody can. All right. Tracy suggested that maybe we would go around and just, if we have a top candidate in mind, narrow it down that way. So I have a list here, I'm gonna go around the table. No particular order other than I think experience or longevity on the school committee is how I listed names, so we'll start with Lori.
So it's a really hard decision because they're all very qualified and they all bring different gifts to the table. My first pick would be Mr. Gann, based on what we've witnessed and where he is in his work.
Okay, next I think is Jess.
Well, golly gee, that's a hard decision. You know, I think. Can I explain before I decide?
I think right now we're just trying to get a, just a top, do you have a top candidate and then see if we come up with any commonalities there?
I can eliminate one.
Who would be your top?
I don't know. I think Dr. Susan Gilson and Al Gann are neck and neck in terms of what could be given to the district long-term.
Okay. Next would be Lisa.
Al Gann is my top choice because he's done so many great things here already. And I think we're lucky to have him and we'd be lucky to keep him for another year.
All right, Beth?
My top choice is Al Gann, same reasons. I think he's done a great job. I went back and watched the meeting, we decided to do an interim, and the biggest thing that came up was stability, 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 and keeping out his stability. I didn't like Dr. Gilson a lot though, she was a very cagey person. But Al is my number one.
I would agree. So it does look like Al is a majority top choice. In order to discuss, deliberate, we should have a motion? Is there a motion to hire any of the candidates?
I'd like to make a motion to hire Mr. Albert Gann as the interim superintendent for the 2025-26 school year.
That's Lori, is there a second?
Second.
Lisa, thank you. All right, so the motion on the floor that we will discuss and deliberate and then vote on is to hire Al Gann as the interim superintendent for next year. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
I think one of the things that Al brings to the table is the repair relationships within the towns. And I think that's really, really important. I think there's a lot that goes into selecting someone, but the repair work that he has done and the confidence that the boards have in him, I think, to your point, the stability, Beth, I think that's really important. And I also feel, by the way, that we didn't mention anyone, Ms. Flaherty, who I also really, so I can plug her in there.
And also, I feel like he really is setting a lot of things straight, you know, which is part of, you know, the relationship building. But he's like looking through just like so many different conversations where he's like identifying, you know, ways that we're spending too much money, where we could save money or, you know, just like really streamlining everything and just, yeah, like he was saying, memorializing everything, documenting everything, and just making it more efficient and effective.
Anyone else?
I think when we entered into doing an interim first second year, we were, my main concern was we were competing about districts that were having superintendents of 25 years retire. And I was concerned that we wouldn't gain good candidates for a long-term solution. I think Al has done an amazing amount of work and honestly, I don't understand. I think Al has done an amazing amount of work, and honestly, I don't understand why he wants to continue. It's an incredibly hard thing, and the hours that he puts in are inconceivable to human life. You know, but I think the goal we gave the interim superintendent last year was to pick us up out of a situation, and he did just that. And I think, you know, the attractive thing, Dr. Susan Gilson's, you know, she gave us this entry plan, and I think it would benefit everyone if we were to set goals, just like we would for a superintendent. So if there's something that people are not happy with, or we need to go in a different direction, there are measurable stop points in these goals that we can address things before they get out of hand, so.
You're up.
I just, my preference for Al has to do with the fact that he has no goals beyond this year. His goal is, he has an end date, there's no place like he can't stay longer. I, that's appealing to me, that he wants to, he has a goal for this year, and his goal is to get us a really great permanent superintendent next year. And I appreciate somebody who's willing to do that, because I can't, I don't question their motives. And I just think we're going to have a great opportunity next year. I also, when I went back and watched the video, we talked about what the timeline was going to look up, look like for hiring for the next one. And I'm very concerned about switching superintendents, interim superintendents solely in the game, because how are they going to, the goal was for the next interim to transition the new permanent superintendent. And we talked about possibly hiring someone like January. So we're going to hire someone to start September 1st, and then they're going to be the one transitioning that person? I would prefer it to be someone who knows this district much better. So that's my feeling.
Yeah. So everybody had a chance to speak, I'd like to say some things, too. I don't disagree with anything that any of you said. Megan's not here tonight, but I think we need to thank Megan for bringing Al to us. You know, I think it's probably the best thing that she's done for the district is bring Al to us. Last summer, Al discussed it in his interview, we were in a mess, the previous superintendent. You know, we all know the struggles we had with the budget through the town meeting, the special town meeting, leaving, going off, telling Megan, you know, she's going to retire. Couple weeks before school started, I can't imagine the work that Megan had to do to go out as the chair at the time, and, you know, the pressure, the stress that that was on her. She reached out to Tracy, Tracy helped quite a bit. But Megan really did the bulk of the work to bring Al into this district. I remember talking to her at the time, and the first thing I said to her, she gave me the name, and the first thing I said to her, I was like, "Megan, this guy's got ethics complaint right there. It's like Google, it's like the first thing that comes up." And she said, "No, trust me, I've had a conversation with him, just trust me, just trust me. I'm begging you, just please have a conversation with him and see what you think." So I did, and I listened to her, I had a conversation with him, and then we got two applicants for that job, and we chose Al. And I really, I think we all need to give credit to Megan for doing that for us. That was really good. But yeah, I agree with Beth's at stability, right? And, you know, have somebody here for four months, and then they're still trying to figure out what's going on before they have to transition to someone else. So, yeah. Jess, your comments about the outline that she gave us, yeah, it's great, no complaints. I just, yeah, I think for consistency's sake, and stability, you know, I think is the best. I mean, he came in, the team that he's built in central office, like he mentioned as well. Again, he came into a situation where like basically rebuilt from the ground up. There was nobody in there, bills weren't being paid, paychecks weren't going out. Not just simple things, like, you know, I don't know if you work, but if you're expecting your pay to come in and you have your bills set up to go out, and then you don't get your pay, or you get the wrong pay, that's kind of a problem, and that's what he walked into. As an executive, he has to, you know, he has people that he's worked with in the past, so he brings them in and gets things functioning, functioning again. That's what you do at that level. They were able to come in, no training, they knew what they were doing, absolute professionals, walked in, and within a few months, yeah, we got a lot of problems, but they started solving them one by one by one, prioritizing again, things solved. And all I've heard from around the district was, yes, they've been doing great. I got paid, fantastic, I can get my bills paid. I know we had some issues last week, we got a lot of emails as a committee. What we got, I should say, we got one email multiple times. It seemed like a lot of copy and paste went on, pointing out some flaws. But then we also got emails in favor. I spoke to a lot of people in Berlin, who, they're a little more hesitant maybe to write into us, to put things in writing, but speaking to them, had nothing but good things to say about the change that has been going on. So, yeah, I think I agree with everything you guys have said. If anybody has any last thoughts to say, and then we'll vote on this current motion.
I would like to say one thing. I was able to attend that meeting on Monday night through Google Meet. And I know one of the criticisms of Al, which was interesting, because I have a really opposite stance on that, was that he brought in his own people. To me, that's a credit to Al. When you have really competent, good people who can come in and straighten out a situation, and they're willing to come and work with him, that says that they have respect for his ethics, the way that he runs things. And so I think we've been lucky to have him and to have the people that he's brought in, because it's a machine that's working up there, and the staff has said how grateful they are for the central office staff, the teachers, and that's a wonderful thing to hear, because normally you don't hear that. But they've been so appreciative, because so many things have been out here now, in such a short period of time.
Anybody else, any final comments?
I think we gave him that mission, too, like bring in a competent team to help solve this issue. And so, you know, I know with the ethics complaint, that looks suspicious, but that's exactly what we charged him to do, and he did it, and he brought us out of a bad situation. You know, I think interims have a lot of work to do, and we still have miles to travel.
And I also want to say that I just think it's so impressive what he and Al have done with the budget. You know, because it's probably like one of the worst budgets ever, because it's like below level. But also, you know, there's cost increases, and because of his organization and experience and communication and hard work, you know, making sure that he listens and, you know, communicates everything to all of the different communities in the town, that everybody respects him and respects here. And he has generated so much respect despite it being, you know, coming from where he was last year. And then also, that this budget kind of stinks, but people still really respect him, and he has healed a lot of the issues because of his work and his approach.
Thank you. Beth, do you have anything?
I just wanted to say, I was talking to Al on point, and I'm probably saying it wrong, but I think he was talking, he said that candor is kindness, and being candid with people is being kind to them. And I think sometimes people are used to that level of candor, and they, it rubs them the wrong way. And so I think there's a little bit of that, and I think he also deserves people to be candid with him, too. He's learning, he can't fix it if you don't address what your complaint is. And then, and my feeling of the last week is that I hadn't heard anything negative until last week, so it was really hard for me to take that all in, where it's like, we want, let's fix it along the way, let's all be candid. Let's all, if you see something, say something, and if you don't like how something's being done, let's be upfront and honest about it, and we can all work on fixing it, can all work and be more transparent. And room for us all to room.
Create an open and low.
Yeah, yes.
All right. Yeah, I mean, obviously Al is the incumbent, he has a leg up on everyone, because we have experience with him. I want to make it clear that this is not any negative knock on any of the other candidates. I also, I think I forgot to mention, it's not listed on the agenda, but last week we did, we did vote to invite four candidates to come interview. One of those candidates didn't choose to take a position elsewhere, so that's why they weren't here tonight, just in case anybody was wondering. I want to put that out there. But are we ready to vote? So we're voting on the motion to hire Al Ganim as the interim superintendent for next year. We will just do a roll call, vote to be official, and I will go in the same order. Lori?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
And I was aye as well, so if that motion passes, we will hire Al Ganim. Probably should have said subject to negotiations.
Subject to negotiations.
Yeah, subject to negotiations on his contract. All right, that is the last item on our agenda today. Could I please have the motion to adjourn this meeting?
So?
Lori?
Second.
Jess? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against adjourn? All right, we're adjourned, thank you very much.
And just so you know, I'll contact the finalist unless anyone wants to. I'll contact the finalist, although the one you just hired is in family feud, so I do like that.